Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the City of Prattville. We have zero public hearings tonight, so we will move straight into our council agenda. So at this time, we do invite you to stand for our pledge of allegiance and our invocation. The invocation will be given by Mayor Gillespie this evening.
Well, it's good to see everyone tonight, and if you will, bow with me, please. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for our many blessings. Thank you for all the gifts that you give to us, whether we realize those are gifts or not. Continue to bless us, continue to watch over us, continue to lead us as leaders of this community. We need all the hopes and prayers from this community to help us move forward. Continue to guide our thoughts, our hearts, and our tongues to help Prattville be progressive and prosperous. Continue to watch over us and the ones who are in need of health and wealth and community service. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Sanders. Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merrick.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchitt.
Here.
Counselor Veen.
Here.
Having a quorum present, I do call this meeting to order. The character trait of the month is discernment. Discernment is understanding the deeper reasons why things happen. At this time, we will call for an approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on February the 18th, 2025. The chair entertains a motion to approve these minutes. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And the minutes are approved. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda items only. If you wish to speak on anything we'll be voting on this evening, we do ask that you gather here along the wall beside the podium, that you sign up on the podium, and you'll be called after printing your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to address the council. We are asking that you stick very closely to our time limit this evening, as we have a strong agenda as well as going into executive session later, and we are trying to get everyone out of here before the weather hits. So we will be sticking closely to our time tonight. So please state your name and address for the council, and then you may begin to speak. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Battlewell.
Good evening. My name is Anne Battlewell. I live at 173 Pletcher Street, 36067. Mayor, council members. I have lived in Prattville for 42 years. For 32 of those years, I've been involved with saving, promoting, and sharing the history of this city. Repeatedly, I am asked when giving a tour or speaking to a group, how has Prattville been so successful in retaining its historic character? I even have had calls from other cities asking the same question, wanting to do the same for their city. I come to you today to ask, plead with you, as city leaders, to take another look at the plans for the Spillway Park. On seeing the publicized renderings, I must say I was shocked. First, I want to say I'm in favor of an entertainment venue on the site. What was disturbing was that the architectural plans seem to have been designed with no consideration for its location in the historic district. I believe you could have a venue, but one that is more in keeping with the historic character of the district. I do not recall an advertised meeting to discuss the plans, and to be honest with you, though I knew a park was planned for the site, I was comfortable in thinking that the design would be similar to other recent city structures that paid homage to our incredible history. Great effort was undertaken to design the Public Works Building, modeled after the old M&amp;O Railroad Station depot. Plans for the football stadium include an arched entrance symbolizing the 1898 iconic arch of the Daniel Pratt Gin Shop. The mill developers were required by the federal government to retain the historic integrity of these buildings. These plans are not appropriate for our historic downtown. I am asking, I'm begging you, the city leaders, to reconsider the plans for the Spillway Park. The current plans are in no way in keeping with the character of the rest of our downtown, historic downtown. The guidelines from the Historic Prattville Commission include the following guidance: The construction of new buildings downtown is an important facet of maintaining the integrity of the Prattville Historic District. New construction should match the surrounding context, respecting the established pattern of historic buildings. New construction shall draw inspiration from historical architectural forms adjacent to the new building. The current plans would be more appropriate in East Prattville. The flat roof of the pavilion in an area where pitched roofs prevail is too modern, and it's not even similar to the architectural character found in downtown. The scream in your face, oversized lettering on the signage, is also an affront to the charming personality of our downtown.
Ms. Battlewell, I hate to stop you, but you've reached your time limit, and we are trying to stick very closely to that tonight. Thank you for your comments. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for Ms. Battlewell?
Would you mind finishing, please?
Thank you. Modifications of the signage would at least be an improvement. I ask you to think how this structure will appear to visitors from all over our state and other places that come to our city. Amongst all the history, I think it will jump out like a sore thumb. And two, how is it going to look in 20 or 30 years? The buildings on Highway 31 were once shiny, crisp, and new, but they have not endured like our historic buildings. I feel one day, a future mayor will be calling for the demolition. Instead, why not build a structure that is in character, a lasting legacy, that you, the city leaders, can be remembered by? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Battlewell. Mr. Low Miller?
How y'all doing tonight? Now imagine driving into our historic district. You see a revitalized commercial district with period lighting, brick sidewalks, attractive landscaping, and looking ahead, see 19th century towering factory building designed and built by our city's founder, Daniel Pratt. These are New England styled industrial buildings with pitched roofs. There's no other city in our state or in the South that can honestly boast as being the New England village of the South. It's this significant history that sets Prattville apart from other Alabama towns. We believe our history is our future. People from all over come to Prattville to spend day walking, canoeing, enjoying, absorbing our historical offerings. Now let's turn the corner. The Fountain and Heritage Park pays tribute to the artesian wells found in Prattville. You see the dam and creek, the 1859 Pickerhouse saved to be a first-class restaurant. The only structure remaining after 2002 fire demolished one of Alabama's earliest large adobum cotton mills, a tragic loss for our city. Across the street is the original 1856 Prattville Mercantile Building. As one makes their way down Court Street, the Mon Creek General Store, the 1870 First Courthouse, the 19th century Washington Lewis Homer scene. History is alive and well in Prattville. This brings us to the old mill site that was mentioned earlier tonight. This site is the most significant, most historical industrial site in the state of Alabama. This is holy ground, ground zero, when it comes to speaking of early industrial development in Alabama. Daniel Pratt is recognized as one who introduced the Industrial Revolution to Alabama, and Prattville is the first industrial village of Alabama. The dam across the Toga Creek stands as the earliest provider of water power for large industrial factories. How can you disrespect this site with the modern plans for Spillway Park? Ask you to reconsider, folks. Make some modifications. The new park is more fitting for the historical district. This Spillway Park needs to be, have more historical significance. Do we not agree? Step back, take another look at it, please. Thank you for your time and your service, guys.
Mr. Low Miller, could I ask you to state your name and address for the clerk, please?
Skip, Low Miller. I gotta say my address, hello?
Yes, sir, we do. We require that.
Ms. Mayor, do you know if this project at Spillway was brought before HPC?
Yes, sir. It was, and they approved it. I think it went...
It went through about two different rounds.
Try again.
I think it went through about two different rounds with HPC. I need to verify that. But I would encourage anyone and everyone that they would like to keep up with all the activities of our boards and committees and so forth. It's a, if they get with our City of Prattville webmaster, they can be included with what they call Mail Chimp, and they'll get all notifications of all the various boards and city council meetings.
I have a question as well, Mr. Mayor, and you may or may not know this, may have to go to one of our department heads. The architects, was it not Chambliss King Architects that handled this? And are they not the same architects that also handled the mill property? And so the two were done somewhat in conjunction by the same architectural fund. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you so much. Any other counselors have any questions or comments at this time? We will then move forward. We are, Mr. Mayor, please come forward with your report.
Good evening, counselors. Friday evening, I enjoyed the City of Prattville's 24th Annual Black History Program. The performance showcased so much talent, and guest speaker was Dr. Brittany Anderson. She did a wonderful job. It was a great event all around. Counselors, with your support of Consent Agenda Resolution Number Six and Seven, we will support two ambulances from the Prattville Fire Department. These ambulances will be donated to the Toga County Board of Education, for the Toga County Technology Center, and to Central Alabama Community College. These ambulances will help with education, training, and workforce development. Also, with your support of Resolution Two, we will provide a turning lane on Main Street that will add a... It will be a turning lane going into the north side of Pratt Street. Most everybody thinks there's only a south side of Pratt Street, but between the gas station and our veterinarian's office there, Pratt Street does continue, but we're looking at doing that project to increase the traffic flow. With Council Support Resolution Nine is for geotech site services at North Island Park. I've been informed by the engineer on this project that if approved this evening, they will be on-site tomorrow starting these services. Let's see, I've had several other projects update you on. The City Hall parking lot project is wrapping up. Will add about 10 additional parking spots in downtown Prattville. Downtown Fourth Street is currently getting repaired and improved sidewalks. The library repairs have started, and hopefully the library will be opened back up for public use sometime next week. I know on everyone be excited to hear that we should have fewer construction barrels in Prattville sometime next month. Highway 82 is scheduled to be open in April. Counselors, I hope you'll join me at the Long Lewis Groundbreaking on Friday at 10:00 a.m. Forward commercial elite services being added to their facilities. Long Lewis has been a partner in the City of Prattville for a little over 10 years, and we are excited for this expansion. Ataga Pals is hosting a free community-wide shred event on Saturday, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a point of privilege, and Ms. Melody, if you could come up?
Here I am. Do I need to say my name and all that?
No, ma'am.
Oh, no, don't do that. Okay. Well, I'm glad to be here, and I appreciate being here. I am with PALS, which is People Against a Littered State. It is a state organization, but we have our own Ataga County organization that has several events during the year. And one of them is, we usually have a river cleanup, which had to be postponed due to high water and weather, but surely it will come and be in the future. And then we have our shred event, we do things with the schools, and we participate with CityFest. So things are going on with all the goal of being a cleaner city and also to get people to participate in these activities. I encourage you to get, participate, I would even encourage you for spring cleanup possibly, to do in your district, just organize a spring cleanup. We're gonna do it a little looser this year. You do a screen pickup, give us a little pictures, and we'll say thank you. We'll provide bags, we'll provide pickup things, but that's what we're here for, to make our city a better place. I invite you to come to shred event, and we'll serve you a little breakfast on Saturday morning, and I'm hoping we're gonna have really good weather. But I appreciate the city's support. I think they've got some signs on the garbage trucks right now. I saw WSFA Tonight has a big blip that they're gonna be, our eight to 12 shred event this Saturday, which will be at the Revenue Building, and we expect a large crowd. So look forward to it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, and I tell you one thing about Ms. Melanie, actually saw her working in her yard the other day. So she was actually picking up items. She is a hard worker as well, so thank you on that one. I also like to remind everybody, don't forget about Spring Ford this Sunday, and come out to the Mustang Sally Car Show in honor of the musician Wilson Pickett. This event will be, will take place at Spillway Park from 1:00 to 4:00. Spring ball season is almost among us. Don't miss baseball opening day on March 15th at Whitestone. We will not, you will not want to miss the almost 600 kids taking the field that day. Hope each of you will be weather aware this evening, and stay safe. Madam President, end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you so much. At this time, we will move into our reports from the council on special committees. Counselor Sanders, do you have a report?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Jackson, do you have a report?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Stritchitt?
No, ma'am.
And I have none. At this time, we will have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that could fall under our consent agenda include Resolution Number One, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost of the removal of garbage and rubbish at 711 Doster Road. Resolution Number Two, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 110 Lee Circle a public nuisance, and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Three, to reject all bids related to bid number 025002 for the Public Works Vehicle Maintenance Office Building. Resolution Number Four, to surplus personal property from wastewater. Resolution Number Five, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 1946 Chancellor Ridge Road. Resolution Number Six, to surplus 12009 Dodge 3500 ambulance from the fire department and donate to the Ataga County Board of Education for the Ataga County Technology Center. Resolution Number Seven, to surplus 12012 Dodge 3500 ambulance from the fire department and donate to Central Alabama Community College. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And the consent agenda is now before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted. At this time, we will move into our regular agenda with Resolution Number One, which is to authorize the release of funds for the construction of a restroom at Bell Park to Camco Properties LLC for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed $77,000. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Parks and Recreation has identified a need to replace the restroom facilities at Bell Park, whereas Camco Properties LLC has expertise to provide said construction at a cost not to exceed $77,000. Whereas pursuant to Section 39-2-1 Code of Alabama, as amended, said construction is a public works project. Whereas Section 39-2-2 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, allows contracts for public work projects under $100,000 to be let without bidding. And whereas this is a budgeted expense in Parks and Recreation, now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, city of funds of Prattville not to exceed $77,000, are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Camco Properties LLC for said construction, and said funds are approved and appropriated at fiscal 2025 budget line item, Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay. Be it further resolved, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number One?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Counselor Stritchitt, we were just talking before. Do you mind explaining the $77,000 cost for this bathroom, please?
Yeah, I'm not a construction expert, but to keep it simple, simple math, it's a 600-foot square building with plumbing, brick, shingles, mortar from the ground up. That cost, that comes to about $128 per square foot. At today's going rate, that's pretty much in line with everything else. So that's how we got to that price.
And I think you mentioned also that there's a storage?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It'll be a bathroom with a attached storage facility as well for storage down there, which our other facilities do not have.
And I'm asking just for clarification, because a couple of us prior to this meeting received some texts and calls as to why the cost was that. So I just wanted you to explain that as the Parks and Rec chair. Thank you.
No problem.
Is there any further discussion regarding Resolution Number One? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number One, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And this resolution is adopted. Resolution Number Two is to authorize the release of funds for the Turning Lane Project at Pratt Street and Main Street to Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $91,548. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas a need has been identified for traffic improvements at Pratt Street and Main Street, and whereas Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated has the expertise to complete said project at a cost not to exceed $91,548. Whereas pursuant to Section 39-2-1 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, said project is a public works project, and whereas Section 39-2-2 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, allows contracts for public works projects under $100,000 to be let without bidding. And whereas this is a budgeted expense in the Capital Projects Fund, now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville, that funds in amount not to exceed $91,548,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated for said project, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item, Capital Projects Fund, Pratt Street, Main Street sidewalks. Be it further resolved, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Two? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And Resolution Number Two is adopted. Resolution Number Three is to authorize the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Rice Advisory LLC for financial advisory services. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the finance director has identified a need for financial advisory services on an ongoing basis, and whereas the City of Prattville desires to enter into an agreement with Rice Advisory LLC to provide said financial advisory services, and whereas compensation for said advisory services shall be budgeted from the Capital Projects Fund during the term of the agreement and a per transaction fee basis with respect to the issuance of each series of bonds, notes, or other debt of the city, and whereas said agreement shall be in effect for a term not to exceed three years. And whereas Section 411651a3 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, allows contracts to secure services with consultants possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville, that the mayor is authorized to enter into a professional services agreement with Rice Advisory LLC for said financial advisory services, and funds will be approved and appropriated from the determined yearly budget. Be it further resolved, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Three? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And Resolution Number Three is adopted. Resolution Number Four is to authorize the release of funds for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Cooters Pond Park to Game Time for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed $74,949.75. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas Parks and Recreation has a desire to install new playground equipment at Cooters Pond Park, whereas said playground equipment and installation are available from Game Time Cooters Recreations LLC at a total cost not to exceed $74,949.75. Whereas pursuant to Section 39-2-1 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, said project is a public works project. Whereas Section 39-2-2 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, allows contracts for public works projects under $100,000 to be let without bidding, and whereas this is a budgeted expense in Parks and Recreation, now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the City of Prattville, that funds in amount not to exceed $74,949.75 are hereby authorized and approved and paid to Game Time for said playground equipment and installation, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal 2025 budget line items, Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay. Be it further resolved, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Four? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And Resolution Number Four is adopted. Resolution Number Five is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Krebs Engineering Incorporated for preliminary engineering and design services for the Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, project number TAPMNTA25933, CPMS reference number 100079724 for sidewalk extension on Service Road 14 Selma Highway from Maple Street to Washington Ferry Road at a total cost not to exceed $63,000. Counselor Jackson, will you read this resolution for us, please?
Whereas in Resolution Book 2025, page 16, on January 28, 2025, the city council of the City of Prattville authorized the mayor to enter into a construction agreement with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for project number TAPMNTA25933, CPMS reference number 100079724 for the sidewalk extension on State Route 14 Selma Highway from Maple Street to Washington Ferry Road. And whereas the engineering department has identified a need for engineering services for said project, and whereas Krebs Engineering Incorporated has the expertise to provide said engineering services at a cost not to exceed $63,000, and whereas Section 39-2-2D1 Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, allows contracts to secure services with engineers possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without bidding, and whereas this is a budgeted expense in the Capital Projects Fund, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville, that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Krebs Engineering Incorporated for said engineering services and funds in the amount not to exceed $63,000 are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2025 budget line item, Capital Projects Fund, Selma Highway sidewalks. Be it further resolved, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Five? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. And Resolution Number Five is adopted. And Resolution Number Five is adopted. Resolution Number Six, Councilor Jackson, your mic is still on. Thank you. Counselor, uh, Number Six, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Chambles King LLC for construction, engineering, and architectural inspection services for the Spillway Park improvements for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed eighty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Councilor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the Parks and Recreation Department has identified a need for construction, engineering, and architectural inspection services for an improvement project at Spillway Park, whereas Chambles King LLC has the expertise to provide said services at a cost not to exceed eighty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Whereas Section thirty-nine dash two dash two D-one Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended allows contracts to secure services with architects possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without bidding, and whereas this is a budgeted expense in the Capital Projects Fund, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with Chambles King LLC for said architectural inspection services at a cost not to exceed eighty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five budget line item Capital Projects Fund Spillway Park Improvements. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there discussion regarding Resolution Number Six?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Kelly, if you wouldn't mind, could you come up and kind of give a background as to the process? I know there's been a couple concerns up here. Just wanted to see if we could, uh, address those before we voted, please.
Sure. Uh, like the mayor stated, we went for HPC to have it approved, um, with the design. Chambles King is the architect that did the Mill Properties, uh, also the Picker Building. Um, we went through all of the process with HPC, uh, explaining the design, the, any ways to incorporate any of the historic sites like they're talking about, and that was the design that was approved. Um, we awarded the bid, I believe, last council meeting, and Web Construction was the winner, and they plan to start construction on Monday.
All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Is there further discussion regarding Resolution Number Six? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, so basically, is it too late to take into consideration any of the concerns voiced by Mr. Lotmiller and Ms. Boutwell, or are we just at the point where we have to just move forward?
Do you wish to address this, Mr. Stritchitt? Would you like for?
No, I just. I mean, if there, everything's set to begin Monday, and it's been approved, so, I mean, as far as I know, Mr. Jackson, it's ready to go.
Further discussion regarding Resolution Number Six? Yes, sir. Mr. Whaley.
Just for clarification, the, what we're voting on is for architectural inspection services and engineering services. The bid's already been awarded, right? I mean, we're, okay. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Then I will call for a vote. All in favor of Resolution Number Six, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and any abstentions. And Resolution Number Six is adopted. Resolution Number Seven is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for construction, engineering, and inspection services for Spillway Park improvements for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Councilor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us?
Yes. Whereas the Parks and Recreation Department has identified a need for construction, engineering, and inspection services for improvements to Spillway Park, and whereas Civil Southeast LLC has the expertise to provide said services at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Whereas Section thirty-nine dash two dash two D-one Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended allows contracts to secure services with engineers processing a high degree of professional skill to be let without bidding, whereas this is a budgeted expense in the Capital Projects Fund, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into said agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for said engineering services at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand five hundred dollars, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal twenty-twenty-five budget line Capital Outlay, Capital Projects Fund Spillway Park Improvements. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Seven? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Seven, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and any abstentions. And Resolution Number Seven is adopted. Resolution Number Eight is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Strategic Government Resources, SGR, to conduct an executive search for a Planning and Development Director for the City of Prattville at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars. Councilor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the Human Resources Director has determined the need for an executive search for the replacement of the Planning and Development Director of the, for the City of Prattville, and whereas SGR has the expertise to provide said services at, at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with SGR for said services and funds in the amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget line item Planning and Development, uh, Salaries and Wages. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Eight? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Eight, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Eight is adopted. Resolution Number Nine is to authorize the release of funds for Geo-Technical Site Services at North Highland Park to GTEC LLC for the Parks and Recreation Department at a cost of ten thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Councilor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Parks and Recreation has identified for a need for Geo-Technical Site Services at North Highland Park, and whereas GTEC LLC has the expertise to provide said services at a cost of ten thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Whereas this is a budgeted expense in Parks and Recreation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in amount ten thousand one hundred and sixty dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to GTEC LLC for Geo-Technical Site Services, and said funds are approved and appropriate fiscal twenty-twenty-five budget line item Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay. Be it further resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Nine?
Mr.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson.
Did I hear you say that they'll be out tomorrow for this? Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion on Resolution Number Nine? Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution Number Nine, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution Number Nine is adopted. This concludes our items on our regular agenda tonight. At this time, the council will welcome comments from persons present, and we have anyone who wishes to speak tonight to please line up on this side close to the podium, print your name and address for the city clerk. You will come forward and have three minutes to speak to the council on any item tonight. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Robinson, come ahead. We are so glad, by the way, that you are feeling better. You were in our prayers, and we are grateful to have your smiling face back in front of us.
Glad to be back. My name is Barbara Robinson. I live at one-twenty-three White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama. First of all, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate what you all, the sacrifice you made to help make my event successful. I have some pictures, but they're all on a thumb dry. So, some kind of way, I would try to get you all some pictures. I hate you left before, all that other stuff. But anyway, I'm also here on business. I just want to know, I'm not sure what this, all that geog, what that graphic, whatever y'all planning on Geo-Tech, technical stuff that you're planning on doing for North Highland Park, but you know, next month is April. On the twelfth of April is our Easter egg hunt, so I'm back. And I need to know from the last time that I was here to ask about Forests having more restrooms and accommodation, y'all had plenty of time to discuss it before I came back. So I'm here wanting some answers, 'cause I didn't get them the last time. But I need to know how y'all planning on, on making provision for all the people that's probably be in the park, the parents, the children, you know, when if everybody, 'cause when you only got one stall in each bathroom, that's gonna be kind of, you know, awkward.
Ms. Robinson, if I could address that. Um, it's not a city-sanctioned event at the park. It's, um, a private event. So if we have something like that at Pratt Park, or, you know, we had an event last summer at Cooters Pond, anytime it's not a city-sponsored event, the city doesn't provide restrooms. So for like portable restrooms, you know, some, what people have gone out and done is use, their churches has helped provide, uh, the communities helped provide. They've, uh, master sponsorships from, from businesses, but the city cannot provide those restrooms 'cause it's not a city-wide event. If we do one, you gotta do them all. Anytime somebody'd have, say, a, uh, family reunion at, at Pratt Park, we'd have to provide those as well, and just it's not in the bylaws for us to provide those restrooms.
My sentiments is we wouldn't have this question, we wouldn't be having this debate if when they was villainous in consideration to if people using the park, it's a public park, yes. I understand, but this is for the community. It just not just a organization that we are, yeah, we're giving it, but we have kids from everywhere. We have the parents from everywhere. This is a city. This is city, and the city also owns the park.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, for example, the event we had in, I think, last summer at Cooters Pond had over five hundred people down there, and that group had to rent their own porta-potties. Even though there are restrooms at Cooters Pond, the city did not provide any of those restrooms.
So you all are saying for the public when these children come, and that, well, y'all having to still have not just made any consideration of going back and relooking at this, how it was designed, that maybe it could be corrected for the future?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, you know, it's, I think we all know in here, uh, North Highland Park is going through some more renovations with the vote tonight. Uh, the Geo-Technical Team will be out in the morning. Um, they, depending on what all they find, uh, more improvements, uh, and also what the, um, bid process goes through, what the dollar amount comes back, uh, there is potential of a covered area. So during all of that, we will look at things as, as I mentioned with you and others before, you know, this is sort of the never-ending project as well. And, um, but Counselor, uh, Stritchitt is correct. You know, it's not a city-sponsored event, and if you don't mind, I don't know if anybody has reached out to our Parks and Recs about use of the, of the park on that day. So if we, if you could have someone do that, the only way we really know about the Easter egg hunt is through word of mouth with you, but, um...
Yeah, it should be. We have a flyer.
Okay. But now the, uh, there is a good possibility if this, uh, NHP project does move forward, and I hope that it does, um, come sometime the middle, end of May, um, a lot of North Highland Park will be inaccessible. But sometimes they just have to say pardon our progress.
Right. I understand that. I just, you know...
And, uh, I believe the, the city did increase the funds, uh, this current year. Um, so as far as the portlets, I think they could probably take some, uh, did, some of the funds from that. I think it went from seven to ten thousand, um, looking a little bit at Daniel, seventy-five hundred to, to ten.
Okay. All right, then, what I do, I go back and we'll talk with our group and see what's what, but, um, I'm a little disappointed on that, simply because we didn't have the say of how to design the park, for to reconstruct the park, so that's why I'm coming back to everybody to head to say so, but thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. We are glad you're doing better.
Could you give me a time on that day?
A time?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. If we gonna start at twelve noon.
Twelve noon, okay.
Mm-hmm. We would love to have all of you all up there, just like you all represented my event. If y'all come up, that way when, uh, people from all different, um, districts, they can meet and see that their council, I know the mayor's always there, the councils are there, and it makes people feel good to see who their councils are supporting them.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
May, may we participate in the Easter egg hunt there, Ms. Barbara? 'Cause I plan on bringing my basket.
You gonna bring it?
I'm bringing my basket.
Well, I think we gonna have, uh, we have, we got a design.
He doesn't play fair, by the way.
He don't play fair, well, I'll monitor him then. But we will have our baskets, so this way, you know, make sure that everybody gets equally treated, so just come on up and be ready, and we'll feed you afterward.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm so glad to see you, and it was a wonderful event, and we're so glad to be a, be part of it, and congratulations for everything that you've done, and will continue to do for the community. Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
Yes, I pray the Lord keep me here a long time, 'cause I love coming out here. Y'all have a blessing.
You as well. We will move into our closing comments at this time. Mr. Mayor? Counselor Sanders? Counselor Jackson?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, we are, well, I have partnered with Central Alabama Works to host a job fair on Wednesday, March nineteenth, from three to six P.M. That'll be at the North Highland Community Center. We have, I think, about fifteen, uh, jobs, companies that are gonna be there as of right now. I think, eh, yeah, I think we got an email today, so I think we're at about fifteen companies that'll be there, but we've partnered with Central Alabama Works, and this will be at, uh, North Highland Community Center on Wednesday, March the nineteenth, from three to six P.M.
You say three to six?
Counselor Chambers?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Counselor Stritchitt?
No, ma'am.
And I have none. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is Tuesday, March the eighteenth, at six P.M. right here. At this time, the council has a need to go into executive session to discuss legal matters with their attorney for issues not currently in litigation but amid, imminently likely to be litigated. We have a letter from the city attorney advising that this is a qualifying reason for executive session. The council expects to be in session around thirty minutes, and no vote will be taken, no business will be conducted after we return. We will simply adjourn at that time. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us, please?
Counselor Sanders?
Yes.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes.
Counselor Merrick?
Yes.
Counselor Whaley?
Yes.
Counselor Stritchitt?
Yes.
The current time is now six forty-nine. We do expect to return within around thirty minutes.
Somebody turn on the air while we're gone. It got chilly in here. It is hot out here.
We are reconvening, and our time is currently seven twenty-eight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Woo, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. All in favor say yea. Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.